...13 Wilson County Commissioners. I'd all like to join us tonight and invite you back any time that you feel happy to attend. This time I would introduce Commissioner Patton, for prayer and pledge.
Uh, thanks, Jim. Tonight, we have with us to do the, to do the, uh, our prayer. The pastor from First Grade Baptist Church where I'm sitting, and also to do the pledge is Mr. Macio Gaines. I'm sure everyone's familiar with him, Watertown Boys Basketball.
Ladies and gentlemen, let's pray. I declare in heaven thy Father.
Thank you both for being on our floor tonight. This time if you would, rest a present on your desk before you pray. Twenty-five and oh. For the steering committee, Commissioner Hall.
Mr. Chairman, the minutes of March eighteenth in your package have been to be approved.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed? Docent of the agenda?
We make a amendment to the agenda. Under court report, it has Center Court Clerk's office on there. It will be approved.
Aye. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Senator Jennings?
It will be approved. Agenda has amended.
All in favor say aye. Special recognition at this time, the Commissioner Patton and Commissioner Spruance.
to join us, and Principal Yerosevich, if you'd like to join us if you'd like. 2012-2013 Watertown High School Boys Basketball Team on their first state tournament appearance. Whereas, the Watertown High School Boys Basketball Team recently completed their season with a record of thirty wins and four losses, the best record in the history of Watertown High School. And whereas, this team was the District Eight regular season and tournament champions, Regional Four-A champions, and winner of their sectional or sub-state game. And whereas, this team advanced to the Boys State Tournament in Murfreesboro, Tennessee for the first time in school history. And whereas, in accomplishing that milestone, this team, for the first time in school history, was the regional champion and the winner of a sub-state game. And whereas, this team was eliminated in the final quarterfinal round of the state tournament by Lake High, Lake County High School, the eventual 2013 Class-A Boys State Basketball runner-up. And whereas, members of this team include seniors Macio Gaines, Ben Gaines, Ben Bain, I'm sorry, Nick Sakman, Ethan Moss, Josiah Smith, Jake Belcher, and George Thurgood. Juniors Ty Joe, Zack Edwards, and Hunter Warren. Sophomores Robert Carruthers, Cameron Jennings, Colin Jennings, Brant Martin, Dylan Speck, Nolan Allison, Kyle Oakley, and Brandon George. And freshmen Bosco Alakul. And whereas, many individual honors were bestowed on members of this team on their march to the state tournament, including Ty Joe and Josiah Smith being named to the All-District Regular Season Team, with the MVP of the district being Macio Gaines. And whereas, during the district tournament, Macio Gaines repeated as MVP, and Nick Sakman, Ty Joe, Josiah Smith, and Ethan Moss were named to the All-District Tournament Team. And whereas, in the Region Four tournament, Macio Gaines again earned MVP honors, with Ty Joe, Ben Bain, and Josiah Smith being named to the All-Regional Tournament Team. And whereas, Macio Gaines was named to the All-State Tournament Team even though playing only one game while other members of the team played two or three games. And whereas, Macio Gaines has been named to the Associated Press All-State Team in Class A for the state of Tennessee. And whereas, this team, coached by Matt Bradshaw, who in his third year at Watertown, succeeded in leading this team to the best record in the history of the school, breaking the record set by the 2010-2012 team, and during the season earned his 200th career victory. And whereas, Coach Bradshaw was assisted by Leon Love and Brian Gaines. And whereas, Kyle Oakley and Ally Ricketts were managers of the team, and Carl Newton was the athletic director. Whereas, this team created excitement in Watertown High School, the city of Watertown, and for alumni of Watertown High School everywhere, as their success mounted and they took on and conquered challenges never before presented to a boys' basketball team at Watertown High School. And whereas, these young men, under the leadership of Coach Bradshaw and his staff, were a model of commitment, character, and teamwork. Now therefore, being resolved by the county, by the Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee, that this resolution bring presented to Coach Matt Bradshaw, each member of the team, coaching staff, and other members in this, and others mentioned in this resolution, and to Watertown High School Principal Jeff Luttrell to proudly display at Watertown High School in recognition of the 2012-2013 Watertown High School Boys Basketball Team.
Mr. McIlroy?
Aye.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Great job, guys. One, I was watching this like, and it got me a couple of scares, because of the heart attacks there.
Thank you, Commissioner Patton, Commissioner Spruance. Thanks for that. Congratulations again, young men. Ty Joe. For the minutes committee, Commissioner Rappaport. The minutes committee with Mark A. Dean, Department of Commerce, Department of Education, and the Department of Transit, Department of Transportation, but also representatives of our, of this meeting, all the business will be in the measurements' pockets. I hear a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed? Reading of the minutes?
Moving to the extension reading of the minutes.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Good all, or any additions to the notary list? All are good, are your motion to approve?
No.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. For the emergency management committee, Commissioner Ash.
The emergency management committee will be to be seen.
Second. You got a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed? Emergency management director report, Director Jewell.
Good evening. You have our numbers, the EMA report in the packet. Couple of things I did want to touch base, as you know, we had a little bit of a weather scare Thursday evening, and got by quite well. We are anticipating a possible another round, maybe Thursday or Friday morning. We adopted a bit of its policy of doubling up to about sixteen additional people, you know, on staff about a couple of hours before these storms move through. We're also trying to add a couple of ambulances, in addition, try to give us a little jump start after these storms. April, of course, is the peak month, should begin to taper off a little bit in May, so I just wanted to let you know where we are on that. We'll start watching that weather for five hours prior to that coming through the area. The stations that we are building, I want to thank once again everyone for what is happening. I think that's going to be tremendous help for us, and there was one situation I wanted to make sure everybody understood. It come to my attention that it indicated that ambulances only were going to be in some of those stations. That is totally not correct. Station nine, which is on the north side, will accommodate an ambulance, an engine or a pumper, and a brush truck. The new station one on Magic Simpson will accommodate a pumper, an ambulance, a rescue truck, and a tanker, so I want to make sure everybody understood how we were equipping those stations. I'm concerned that we're doing ambulances only, that certainly is not the case. One final note, some extremely disturbing events in Boston today. We, we are vulnerable in this county, are there, and I can't stress enough on all of us, the importance of managing events, be they weather or any kind of activity, be it this or something else, to be done in a unified, managed demand. It is so important, that being considered when it comes to this capacity of caliber to get a location. It's unsettling at best, I thoroughly recommend, and I put that thought in everybody's head as we continue with these tragic events that are occurring. That's all I have. Any questions?
Move forward, safety file. Any discussion? If none, all in favor say aye. Opposed? Thank you. All for the committee, March eighteenth, six fifteen, courthouse, committee, your package. Any discussion? If none, all in favor say aye. Opposed? Chair support, chair front.
Thank you, Mayor, and County Commissioners. Your reports in your package, pretty much average call, calls received to our office, everything's pretty much on par from last month. June offer planter down from last month, one reason, schools was after spring break a couple of weeks during this timeframe, so them numbers will pop back up. Real quick, the, I'm gonna send out here in the next few days, a calendar, for y'all's calendar, our DUI enforcement officers, and do a safety grant with the state. We're gonna be setting up some crash scenarios at some of the high schools, and, well, all of the high schools in Wilson County. I just, I invite everyone of y'all to come with prong, and summertime, vacation time coming on. We just want to get the word out to these kids about the danger of texting and driving and drinking and driving, and so, you know, give them an eye out and experience of what could happen, so. We're in contact with several of the principals around, just, you know, they'll be setting it up in the next few days. The roads worked, there's a list there, y'all see what it is, with the roadway, side of the roadway growing, the road commission will be out there bushhocking here, and they already are, I'm sure, I hope that they'll get behind, but it's gonna cover a lot of trash. Y'all see anything, let us know, we want to keep these roads clean, and if you let Mayor Chief Monwa know, we'll, we'll get him our list, get them picked up. The, I'll reiterate what Mr. Jewell said about the severe weather. Every time there's a severe weather event prior to, there's meetings and different things, by our department and his department to be prepared, and a lot of information sharing going on, so I just want you to know your people are working hard to them events, trying to keep things, if something did happen. And the deal that happened in Boston, Dave, is right, it could happen anywhere, it could happen here, and we need to be prepared for that type of thing, and I feel that we, we're there real close, so just keep them people in your prayers up in Boston. That concludes my report, unless there's any other questions. I got one more thing, I'm gonna be asked about the payroll plan here in just a minute, I'm sure. Me and the mayor had a discussion here in the past hour, I believe, Mayor, and it was a good discussion. I just, you know, everybody understand that it's, the concept, idea of payroll plan is a, is a good idea, and, but I can't tell you what I think about this payroll plan at the lot, at times of view, so that's why I stand on it. Thank you.
Got a question for you? I've got a question, but I actually had something else I want to say, that we have more incident Friday, and I just appreciate Officer Tidwell, right there on the scene, ready to do whatever we needed that day, so again, thank you for, you know, being...
I'm hearing them from all across the school system. Let me just let you know where we stand on the SROs.
We currently have five in training right now, they'll be coming out in the next few weeks. There will be some swapping inside the schools to get it, the ones that you got right now, trying to get some other ones in there that, as we get these trains, so I've gotten more compliments from parents, school administrators, and everything. There's still some work to be done on that SRO program, and we need to keep that in mind during budget time.
That's what I see, reading kindergarten and setting up dates together and meet at the fifth grade, fifth grader stuff.
Will you be setting up classes, texting, et cetera, for the private high schools also?
Yes, I'm, we, we've offered to them, and I know Friendship Christian has opened up to us about wanting to do it, but we have offered to the other private schools.
Okay, good.
Any other questions? All in favor say aye. Opposed? Thank you. For education committee, Commissioner Standard, graduate school support, Mr. Mike Davis.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the county commissioners. We're heading into the home stretch for this year, and with that, of course, comes your in-estimating assessments with TCA, and of course, that's in your report this week. We think our students are prepared and ready to go, and we think they'll do very well. Several other dates that you may want to take note of, are in this month's report. Also provide you with an update on our construction project. I can tell you that brickwork has begun at three of the four sites, not at Watertown, but the other three sites, a lot of brickwork's been done, some roofing's being done. Most of the foundation block is in Watertown, then ready to start the second floor at Watertown with the day, and they're working toward putting the second floor block in, so, on the academic wing, so things are going really well in that arena. There are some changes with this year's registration for kindergarten and first grade. It's a new piece of legislation that was passed last year, and it goes into effect this year. It does impact some students, and you might hear your constituents call you and ask you about that, so I included that in your packet. That is a statute, that is not a board policy, that is required by the state. I will tell you that six new classrooms have been delivered and installed at Carroll Oakland to alleviate overcrowding that we've had there, and so that's been a really positive thing for that school. The other thing I want you to bring your attention, that's not in your packet, but was on left on your desk today, is what's called the State of Education in Tennessee. This is a booklet that's put out, published each year by the Score Foundation, and in there, I want you to turn to page seventy-three, look at that page, and you will see Wilson County, and we're the last on the list, but not only, we last on the list, we are last, almost last, in funding for people in the state of Tennessee. We spend $7,803 per pupil per year in our operation, our full budget, to educate the children in Wilson County. Now, if you look at all of the other school districts that touch Wilson County, you will find that all of them, Brownsville and Smith County include, spend more. Now, this does not include construction projects, does not include debt service or anything like that, but it does not include those things in those other school districts as well. So I want just to share that with you for future consideration when you get ready to look at teacher salaries down the road, and we're talking about teacher salaries, I hope you'll take time to look at this chart, and compare it where we are, and compare it where we need to be, and then look for the four cards that I gave you previously, which says that we have four As, and achievement, two As, and two Bs, and two B's, and we have the highest graduation percentage, highest graduation rate percentage in middle Tennessee. Pretty good thing for your book, in my opinion. So, think about those things. I have had five math, I have several teachers notify me they're retiring or leaving the district at the end of the year. We put out a, a flyer where they have to give us an intent form telling us what, if they plan to be back or not. Five of those are math teachers. I talked to the director of Teacher Education at Tennessee Tech about three weeks ago, and asked him how many student teachers you have coming out to be teachers next year that will be certified to teach math. And Tennessee Tech only has three. That's how hard they are to get. So, if we don't address that, and it's not gonna be my problem here, it'll be my problem somewhere else, but if you don't address that at some point in time, folks, it's gonna be hard to maintain that four As, two Bs, two As, it'll be very difficult to do that. Just wanted to share that with you. You can take that, if you have any questions, ask if you read it, if you'd like to talk to me about it, that'd be helpful. Subject your questions, that concludes my report.
Move forward, Mr. Stevens. Last year, didn't, and this doesn't have anything to do with what you just, did y'all not have to put four and a half million dollars in your fund balance, in order to not have to lay off, that sort of thing?
When we began the budgeting process last year, we had to take money from our fund balance to get to a starting point where we wouldn't have to, let everybody, we had money to do.
At what point this year will you know?
I won't know that until all of our revenues in, and we have a balanced budget showing what we made in, what we spent. I suspect it'll be, it'll be some, I'm not sure it'll be that much this time, we had a pretty good year, I understand sales taxes picked up, coming in a little bit better, probably talked to Hall about that the other day, and we're a little, puts it a positive in that way. I started to do some growth, and as far as, you know, the county and buildings, so we don't know what that will do at this point. And of course, the state has this year paid their growth money, and next year, it came about what the state legislature done, is they put back in capital outlay components they took out last year, will be back in the budget, and in our general purpose budget. So that's, that's some positive things that have affected this year.
But it came up short, and the only alternative would be to lay off, so?
Well, it'd be that or additional revenue.
Ron, here.
Do you have a question?
All in favor say aye. Opposed? HR to rank report with Sullivan.
Good evening. You have the report in your packet, and you'll notice that we had eight job openings the last quarter. You'll also notice as you go, dealing with ten departures and twenty-six new hires. That's a little bit more movement than we normally see, but that's really the commitment that you've got to make with the new SROs. And you'll notice also, there were a lot of transfers and promotions, and that is due to the dedication of the sheriff to make sure that he's promoted his people within to give best coverage possible as soon as possible. So, that concludes my report. Any other questions?
Move forward, safety file. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed? Road Secretary Ted report, Mr. Armby.
County Commissioners, we have just finished this past year as our best payment year ever. We did forty-five miles, which that's way ahead of what we've done in the past. We're hoping to have that kind of year again. If we can manage to put together enough money, we will do that, but we've got eight hundred and about thirty-seven or eight miles to pay, so percentage-wise, that's about what we need, or maybe a little bit more to keep up with the banking in the county. But we've had a good year, and I appreciate y'all's support, hard getting us, well, we get gas tax monies where the most, or half of our budget comes from, comes out of gas tax. And as you know, that's getting dwindled out pretty good, and I think it was a bigger article in the paper, based by Franklin County. And what the article was saying, if they didn't continue to get more tax money, they were gonna lose a lot of their roads, they're gonna start plowing them up, converting them back into base stuff. But I sure would hate to get in that shape, as good a shape as we're in right now. I'd like to keep on paying as much as we can, but we may have a problem here one of these days, we may have to come back and ask for more money to keep paying, but right now, we're not, we're not looking at that, but it's, it looks like a good year if we can just have enough time without the weather, and that's what keeps us from getting as much as we can each year. Other than that, that's all I have of my report.
Move forward, safety file. Second, Mr. Martin, first, thank you very much.
Very much. I saw them pay from Burnett Road today, so I know they're gonna be extended. Second, where do you stand on the payroll study?
As much as I, I've looked at it quite a bit myself, and I've studied it pretty well, and my choice tonight would be to opt out. Just not be, and be involved in that, and, you know, I've studied it every way possible, and that's my choice.
How many miles in pay road in Wilson County did you say?
Eight hundred and thirty, I think it was eleven, thirty-eight miles.
You see, you think you would opt out and not be a part of this payment? Right. Any other question?
Could, could you share with us any particular reason you have for opting out of this program that has been, is being proposed?
The way I've looked at it, it doesn't, I mean, getting to a certain level, in what I've seen, it needs some adjustment, and when I say that, far as the amount of pay that, that I'm looking at, for my people, it hasn't been adjusted right for my people, and that's the reason I'm opting out.
So with additional input from yourself?
And if there were additional adjustments? that's about what we need, or maybe a little bit more to keep up with the banking in the county. But we've had a good year, and I appreciate y'all's support, hard getting us. Well, we, we get gas tax monies where the most, or half of our budget comes from, comes out of the gas tax. And as you know, that's getting dwindled out pretty good. I think it was a bigger article in the paper, based by Franklin County. And what the article was saying, if they didn't continue to get more tax money, they were gonna lose a lot of their roads. They're gonna start plowing them up and converting back into base stuff. But I sure would hate getting that check, as good a check as we're in right now. I'd like to keep on paying as much as we can, but we may have a problem here one of these days. We may have to come back and ask for more money to keep paying. But right now, we're not, we're not looking at that, but it's, it looks like a good year if we can just have enough time without the weather, and that's what keeps us from getting as much as we can each year. Other than that, that's all I have of my report.
Very much. I saw them pay from Burnett Road today, so I know they're gonna be extended. Second, where do you stand on the payroll study?
As much as I, I've looked at it quite a bit myself, and I've studied it pretty well. And my choice tonight would be to opt out. Just not be, and be involved in that, and I, you know, I've studied it every way possible, and that's my choice.
How many miles in Pay Road in Wilson County did you say?
Eight-hundred-and-thirty, I think it was eleven, thirty-eight miles.
You see, you think you would opt out and not be a part of this payment?
Right.
Any other question?
Could, could you share with us any particular reason you have for opting out of this program that has been, is being proposed?
The way I've looked at it, it doesn't, I mean, getting to a certain level in what I've seen, it needs some adjustment. And when I say that, far as the amount of pay that, that I'm looking at, for my people, it hasn't been adjusted right for my people, and that's the reason I'm opting out.
So with, so with additional input from yourself?
And if there were additional adjustments, then you would be open to reconsidering?
I would be open.
Thank you.
Seeing none, thank you. All in favor, say aye. Both. Property assessment report, Mr. Gattin.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Clerk, members of the county commission, fellow Wilson County citizens, you have a privilege to stand before you and bring out the property assessors report. As I always say, it's my intention, it's your assessor of property, providing an accurate summary of the property assessment role. Not only the county commission, but also for fellow citizens. Got a lot of numbers on it tonight, as we've had it laid on your desk. Big, couple others draw, a couple of them I'll point out. First one would be that we topped the fifty-four thousand mark in real property parcel, showing a little bit of growth there. The total assessed value of just that real property is two billion, eight-hundred-and-sixty-three million, nine-hundred-and-seventy-two thousand, eight-hundred-and-fifty dollars as of this morning. Also have some numbers in there for the tangible personal property assessment. That assessed value as of this morning, which those numbers are always still subject to change, is a hundred-and-thirty-five million, four-hundred-and-fifty-three thousand, two-hundred-and-thirty-five dollars assessed value. That brings our total assessed value, not counting the public utilities, which we don't get that to January, it's assessed by the state, to just over two billion, nine-hundred-and-ninety-nine billion, which we're picking up on that three billion mark there. Also, I noticed we had Mr. David Kimball join us in the back room, back in the room there. He had a few more of the Leadership Wilson classes. Him along with Mr. Banick, Commissioner Banick, Jeff Jones, his wife, and I are a part of the Leadership Wilson 2013, and appreciate them coming, being a part of our commission meeting tonight. And a couple of other things, just I want to congratulate you, Commissioner Strug, I believe you're newly married now. Appreciate that. And also on the, on the note tonight, I don't know if anybody knows it, I got a congratulations and a bit of a condolence. Congratulations, I guess, goes out to County Clerk Jim Goodall, I believe yesterday. Jim, was your fortieth wedding anniversary? Condolence goes out to Marsha for having been with you for forty years. Congratulations to you both. That basically concludes my report, unless y'all have any questions?
Same question. Where do you stand on this pay plan?
I've heard, Commissioner, I've heard some talk of it. And, and been mentioned. I haven't seen the details. And so without really knowing the details of where my, our employees stand in the assessor's office on this, I can't give you an outright thumbs up or thumbs down. Normally I'm a guy that's up or down, but I'm just not in a, I'm not in that category tonight.
We can consider that plan?
I'm, I'm for, I'm for the employees getting a raise. Absolutely. Whether this is the plan, I can't, I can't tell you right off, because you just haven't seen enough of the details.
So what you're saying, you don't know if you're opting or not, do you know more about it?
Got no more about it.
You've not received any briefing, any information to date pertaining to this?
I've not received any detailed information. Information about, about where the employee, our leaders are ranking schedule. I've been, I've had a conversation off with the mayor a little bit about it, but I do not have in-depth information of what they, what the study concludes. Commissioner Ratchell?
No, sir.
Any other question? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Both. Mr. Pratt.
The veterans report for the quarter of January through March. We have served five-hundred-and-ninety-seven veterans and with us during that period of time. We have eight-thousand-nine-hundred-and-sixty veterans in Wilson County who bring in nine million, seven-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand, nine-hundred-and-seventeen dollars each year in disability and pension benefits. If you add in the cost that they receive, or the benefits they receive from the hospitals in Nashville and Murfreesboro, that number comes to about twenty-five million dollars. However, nine-one-seven million cash comes into Wilson County. We continue to make monthly visits to the nursing homes, monthly visits with Mayor Hutto to Warren County and Mount Union. The Vietnam Veterans of America presented a sign and a flag to the veterans home on Cedar Street. Attended a Navy bottle at Wilson Central High School. Attended a quarterly training at Smarter National Guard. And we continue our fundraising there for Sombard Park. And if any of your constituents or veterans have a need, have them call me. Any questions?
Yes, sir, I have a question, Mr. Ash, Commissioner Ash.
Yes, Mike.
I would like to know how you come up with this nine million, seven-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand, nine-hundred-and-seventeen dollars of veterans bringing in that money? Is that their disability or their?
That's, I just will be in pain.
Okay. I just sound, I didn't know if you just pulled the number out of the air or what. That's why I want to know.
Any other question? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Both. Republican Works Committee, Commissioner Keith. I'm sorry, excuse me. Circuit Court Clerk, Ms. Lemonille.
Mayor Hutto, Miss Fingers Commissioners and citizens of Wilson County. I placed my quarterly report on your desk. Total taxes and fees collected was one million, two-hundred-and-thirty-two thousand, eight-ninety-three and seventy-six cents. Non-cash receipt adjustments, transfers and conversions, eight-thousand-six-hundred-and-ninety-two dollars, eighty-eight cents. Clerk fees and commissions collected, three thousand, ten dollars, nine-eighty-one, seventy-two cents. We paid out a total of nine thousand, seventy-three, seven-hundred-and-forty dollars and ninety-two cents to the different agencies that I have listed there. Our net fees in reserve as of December 31st, 2012, one thousand fourteen, one-hundred-and-fourteen thousand, ninety-three dollars, seventy-eight cents. Clerk fees and commissions collected this quarter, three thousand, three-hundred-and-ten thousand, nine-eighty-one, seventy-two cents. Wages paid, two-hundred-and-forty-four thousand, four-thirty-seven, forty-seven cents. Zero excess fees turned over to the county, and I'm holding in reserve for payroll purchases, one-hundred-and-eighty thousand, six-hundred-and-thirty-eight dollars and three cents.
Thank you for coming, by the way. But where do you stand on this pay plan?
I have, I have looked over it. I, I do not agree with some of the rankings and the levels.
Were they falling?
Yes.
Okay.
I, I think I would like to see more, more work done on it. If I had to say yes or no tonight, then I would opt out tonight.
Any other question? Mr. Thomas?
So what you're saying is you, you think that the personnel in your office are, need to be in another category as opposed to what they are?
Well, if, compared to two or three, I feel like that some of the personnel in my offices are not raised high enough compared to others.
Others in your department or?
No, in other departments.
Okay, but, but, but I guess maybe in retrospect, they're probably pretty, pretty even with other circuit court clerks around the area as opposed to just other areas of?
I was told that they, I was told that they were. I have not checked with other departments in the region.
Okay. So, okay, you're, you're just looking at, in your departmental?
Yes.
Things which are kind of, not really, okay, like, Mr. Jones?
Yes. So if you're against the plan, you're against the plan, I mean, you're against the employees getting some extra money every year then?
No, I'm not against the employees getting raises, but fee offices are different.
I don't say exactly how fee offices are, but, I mean, everybody's asking, everybody, are they for or against it? So, I mean, very against it, they're against all of them. And so that's why I'm asking you to clarify that. Are you against the whole plan or are you just against some parts of it?
Some parts. I, I would like to see some adjustment with that.
Some of those parts that you're against, that need to be fixed, with you meeting with the budget committee and working that out, is that right?
I'll be glad to.
So, so, but you need those fixed, those parts that you don't necessarily like, then you would like to play?
Probably.
I want, I want to thank you, Mayor, Aaron, Elena, wherever you're, there you are. Yeah, I, I don't know how much of your time you've done, but I know you've done a lot of time with all the reports that I've seen you just gave me and everybody else in their packet. I appreciate what you've done, and y'all have tried to analyze four counties in the area surrounding and try to come up with a good for everybody. I am really surprised, some of the comments tonight, and I'm gonna say it like it is, I'll say it like it is. I'm really surprised, some of the comments, these people are trying to set up a plan, give a raise to all the staff. And it sounds like to me, you're gonna try to nitpick it, some of you, and, oh, I don't, oh, this is not enough for this person, or not enough for this person. Let's go with it. Thank you.
Sure, I've got it clear. If the pay scale is not adjusted properly in your mind, you very well may opt out, say aye, depending on how it works. Until you know how it works, do you know?
Until I know how it works, I really don't know how it works.
Very good, thank you.
I, I have not spent that much time actually studying the plan.
Any other question? Commissioner Thomas?
Just the general premise, I think, what I'm trying to hear is, I think you're trying to compare apples with oranges to a certain degree. It's not everybody does, not everybody in our other sheriff's department, apple control does what circuit court, circuit clerk, clerk employees do. So I, I'm having a hard time trying to wrap my head around with what you're saying compared to other departments. I don't see how necessarily how other departments in the baseline scale, you know, affect, affect your employees. And maybe we can talk about it and, and maybe you can try to give me to understand, but...
You're welcome to stop by my office anytime.
Mr. Ash?
I think we're trying to debate a resolution that's not on the floor yet. This is the, it's not the proper place to be debating the resolution. Thank you. Get a chance to ask these people, and after they give the report, most of them go on calling. So when are we gonna get to ask these questions? We don't answer them now, Mr. Sanders.
Any other question? All in favor, say aye. Both, thank you, Ms. New. Republican Works Committee, Commissioner Keith, Commissioner Jones.
Mr. Chairman, the Ad Center Masslet Committee met on March the 26th, and we ended on April the 1st. It was a long meeting, but the minutes are in your packet. And subject your questions, I believe they'll be received by.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. And opposed, Animal Control, Commissioner Marlowe. Backed Tax, Commissioner Hall.
No report.
Cable Television, Commissioner Weston. Developing Tourism, Commissioner Thomas.
No report.
Finance, Commissioner Murray.
We did have a finance meeting called, but there wasn't a forum, so we did not have a meeting.
Mr. Banick?
No report.
Insurance, Commissioner Rich.
Committee met here at the courthouse on March 21st. Minutes are in your packet. Subject any questions, questions that will be received by.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Both. Judicial, Commissioner Keith. Planning, Nusoni, Commissioner Murray.
Planning, Nusoni, did need till April 9th, 2013, 6:30. So minutes are in your packet. I do have a question for Mayor, for Mayor Jennings. The motion failed by a vote of three, four, one, against, with three actions. So what you're saying is we, we have to have four votes regardless of the number that's present?
You do. State law for this party requires a majority of all the members constituting the county of exonerated bodies, not near that majority of the form to, to make something happen. So we've just always carried that over to the committees. Something like to change in the local rules to see fit. What you've got in a situation on many issues, you've got seven people on the board, people vote for it, you don't have a job.
Does this mean I cannot talk with law enforcement committee about this proposal? So I recommend the, the receiving by.
All in favor, say aye. Both. Recreation, Commissioner Rowland. Rules, Commissioner Ash. Urban Top Facility Board, Commissioner Rowland. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. And opposed, Finance Director's Report, Commissioner Murray.
Got two reports that I set on your desk tonight. One of them's from March 2012, the other one is from March 2013. This is gonna be brief, it looks long, but it's not. If you look at the March 2012 report on page three, I highlighted a couple of things. This time last year, the end of March last year, we had received a little over, well, almost thirty-two million dollars, which is eighty-eight percent of our budgeted revenues. Through March of 2013, on the 2013 report, also on page three, we've received thirty-four million, five-hundred thousand. So ninety-three percent of our budgeted revenues. So we're well ahead of where we were this time last year. Also, if you look at the very last page of both reports, page five, to show you what our total expenditures are here to date, for 2012, we spent a little over thirty-one million. For 2013, we spent a little over twenty-nine million. As of today, we are five million, one-hundred-and-eighty-two thousand dollars excess revenues over expenditures as of today, whereas this time last year, we were at four-hundred-and-sixty-six thousand. And obviously, in the month after this, our revenues slowed down quite a bit and our expenditures continued. I point this out just to let you know that things are moving in a positive direction, that I do believe if I had to give a number right now of where our fund balance would wind up at the end of the year, or what, where our revenues would end up over expenditures, I'd say two to two and a half million would be my guess of revenues over expenditures, which bring your total fund balance to three, four, about four-point-two. So that's my report, unless anybody has any questions.
Two for, say aye.
Hi, Commissioner Bush. Hi. The description of those funds are basically cash account, any logical accounting?
Correct. These are cash accounts.
So we're receiving cash faster than we did last year?
Yes, sir.
But that doesn't have to say anything about the total amount of cash that we expect to receive for the entire rest of the year, nor the total accrued expenses which we have to account for for the entire year?
Well, accrued expenditures are in here, we do income account. So there is, it's, there's many included in expenditures here that haven't gone out there. So we, we do have a cruel basic expenditure side of it.
So that's why I ask.
Look, I apologize. I was thinking in terms of payables. We have encumuses in this budget. Now, on the revenue side, it's a very good indication, I didn't give you five years one to take it, but it's a very good, it's a very, you know, over one year, I agree with you, it can be misleading. Over five-year, I feel pretty good about a little bit.
Any other questions? Seeing, thank you, sir, any word? All in favor, say aye. And opposed. Court for the Budget Committee, Commissioner Justice. Any discussion? Commissioner Bush?
I notice in the minutes for the meeting of April 4th, there's a comment with respect to the road commission minutes displaced in Dutra County Commission packets. They were not included in this packet. Is there a reason? And I'm surprised that that was a budget committee item. Anybody can answer? Mr. Jennings, please.
Mr. Jennings, please.
So, you would concur that...
On a monthly basis, we will be getting copies of the road commission meetings? Okay, so, the budget committee approval of this is sufficient direction. I mean, this is a new item, we've talked about this before, we've never received minutes on a, on a repetitive basis. And so, I guess I'm just trying to dot the i's and cross the t's, that are we gonna get them, or are we not? Because there's, what you're saying is, there's no reason why we shouldn't get them.
What I'm saying to you is, you're a rule keeper too, and the rest of our budget committee, they'll be putting minutes in there of all the different, uh, commissions and that type of thing. So, should've been putting bad commission boards on there, but, uh, beer board, I don't know, some of those, I'll see together.
Commissioner Pat?
Never mind.
Any other questions? Any and all, oh, sorry, Commissioner Murray?
Uh, no, but that's, that's, I do have a question.
Okay. All in favor, say aye. And a vote, thank you. Ready for the vote? Commissioner Murray, go ahead.
The finance committee meetings in the packet, I apologize for missing those. But we did have a finance committee meeting on March 26th, there was a form present, and those committees were in the packet. Michael may have aimed at doing it tonight.
No, I give up planning the job.
A few more to hand out, they are in the packet. Thank you.
All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Resolution 13, Court Act 2, Resolution of Board of County Commission, Wilson County, Tennessee, to reflect revenues received, and I concluded the reasonable budget for the 12, 13 fiscal year, and amend the budget for preparation resolution for the 12, 13 fiscal year, transfer these funds into Wilson University Massment.
Second.
Resolution 13, Court Act 3, Resolution of Board of County Commission, Wilson County, Tennessee, to reflect revenues received, and I concluded the reasonable budget for the 12, 13 fiscal year, and to amend the budget for preparation resolution for the 12, 13 fiscal year, to transfer these funds into Wilson University Massment.
Sir, any discussion?
Consent agenda, it's under $5,000.
Because they account on this, it's off assignment.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right, are you ready to go? Commissioner Keat? Commissioner Fordyall?
Resolution 13, Court Act 4, Resolution of Board of County Commission, Wilson County, Tennessee, to reflect revenues received, and I concluded the reasonable budget for the 12, 13 fiscal year, and to amend the budget for preparation resolution for the 12, 13 fiscal year, to transfer these funds into Wilson University Massment.
Second. Any discussion? Any and all, are you ready to go? Four ayes, one?
Resolution 13, 13, Act 4, Act 5, Resolution of Board of County Commission, Wilson County, Tennessee, to adopt the Wilson County Pay Plan for all general rules and solid waste employees. My motion would be to send it back to the Budget Committee for further study.
All in favor, say aye. Before we go further, uh, let me address the commission. When I got here, I heard complaints from you and others about random pay raises. People in my office make more than somebody else's office. We're not competitive, we train people, and then we let them go somewhere else. A lot of teachers get step increases, and we don't. Will we ever get a raise? We're underpaying more than the counties, and the list goes on. Under your direction and your call, we worked a year on this. This is your pay plan. We came to you not long ago and said, here's what we've been working on. Step increase for everybody of 1%, and we would compare our salaries to Williamson, Rutherford, Sumner, and Montgomery County. We looked at those counties and took the, and took the highest average for the highest salary of the starting salaries. We plugged the numbers in, and they were too high. They would not work for us, they would've caused you for a tax increase. We went back then and put the average in there of those two numbers, and we carried those out, and they worked. We went to each individual commissioner on the first time and explained it. Then went back to the Budget Committee and the Finance Committee to get approval of the concept of a 1% step comparison to Williamson, Sumner, Rutherford, and Montgomery. Just like the sheriff sitting back there did back in, uh, '08 or whatever, didn't realize it till a day till I read those minutes, and he, that's the same counties he compared it to. And then we went to the Finance Committee and got approval of the concept to move forward. It's been proven today that we did not talk to Sheriff Bryan or anybody else beside the fee offices. We did include the fee offices and the road commission in what was a detailed, uh, synopsis of what might happen. We have not talked about individual numbers for one simple reason. There are 243 of these people that are not paid according to the scale we got. And yes, there are some over the top, there are some over the top based on this scale, and those folks may or may not care about the pay plan, but it doesn't bother them, it would give them a 1%. But for those two forty, 243, if I went to each individual department and sat down with them and said, let's look at them and got them excited about a raise, and you killed it, I feel like I'd have a little trouble on my end. So, I didn't talk to anybody, and I'm glad everybody pointed out, I had to talk to one soul. Ms. Rachel sitting in the back, she, I haven't talked to her purposely. She said, hey, why don't you give me that, and I'll pass this out. And I haven't told her until now, but that's the reason I didn't. So, this was the direction you gave me. If you wanna kill it, there was discussion going on, nobody ever called me. I could explain this to you, but nobody ever called me. But if you wanna kill it, I got a box in my office, I'll sit in the corner and stick it in. Don't come in my office and talk about pay, pay raises, don't come in my office and talk about random this or random that. I'll be done with that, and that's okay. This was yours, this is not about me. This ain't about me. And we all understand what that means. But that was the direction. Our goal was, if you said move ahead, Commissioner McFarland said, I think there's some numbers that are not right in there, in our budget committee, and I've explained this to most people. And we said, what we were looking for was a 1% step and a comparison there. There are some numbers that need to be adjusted, there may be some numbers that are, that are different. But if you would've said yes, then we have packets planned to go see all of our people, and let them look to make sure they're in the right grade, and they have the right step, and that they have the right beginning salary. Now, some people said, well, Mayor, Kenny called me Saturday, he said, Mayor, he said, correctional officer, starting at $27,000, you gotta start on your scale at 24. We don't wanna go backwards. What you have to remember is, we pay people the same pay from here on out. I looked at something down in the road commission, $1443 for a truck driver. It doesn't matter if you came here in '89, or if you came here in 2012. So, we pay them the same. The scale will don't let you do that. The scale will say that the correctional offer, yeah, he'll start at 24 because that's his first year. He'll end up not at 27, he'll end up at 29. So, he'll gain some, he'll gain some territory. So, it's a scale, that's a different philosophy than what we have. Sitting in my office today and talking to Sheriff Bryan and, uh, Mr. Bowman, uh, and I'm not sure if it's officer or captain, I don't want it to suck, so that's why I said Mr. Bowman. And he said to me, as we talked, what if I replace Mr. Bowman? He's making X number of dollars, do I bring him in right at there? And I said, well, you could, but Mr. Bowman's been here for quite a few years, does his experience mean anything? When I bring that new guy in, and maybe that new guy has as many years as Mr. Bowman does, if he does, Sheriff Bryan will be, uh, take care of that. The department heads will still have their control and their reign over what they're doing. But once they set that stage, whatever they decide they wanna set, then that's where we go from there. There are a lot of people that will get a raise from this. And starting salary being bad, I'll tell you a prime example. I left here, I left Leonard High School going to the special school district as a sister director. Tommy Hall was sitting over there was making $75,000. I said, yes, I'm gonna make $75,000. I walked in the door, Mr. Brumford said, no, you'll make 60. I said, I thought this job paid 75. He said, he did, but he had a lot more years' experience than you guys, you're just starting out. So, that's a part of this plan. I, you know, our goal was to help employees. It was to give us a structure to stop some of the stuff. He said, but if you say you don't want this, I'm good with that. I thank Elena and Aaron for working for the time to take work to try to make this happen. But, but you run this show, I don't. And if you say, no, let's don't do it, then we're not gonna do it. I, uh, I'll answer any question at this point that you've got for me, if you'd like to ask me some. I'll meet with you individually, uh, I'll do whatever you want me to do. You just give me the direction. Commissioner McFarland? I'm sorry. Commissioner Marlowe?
I have a couple of things. It's disappointing that we go through so much as, um, as administrators, and you're an administrator. Um, and your staff goes through so much, and so much input is provided to us as commissioners concerning a particular, uh, situation. Uh, it's disappointing that people say, well, we don't, we're not sure, or we didn't have time to ask questions. People, Wilson County's not that big, and we cannot pick up the phone and call people to get input, no matter what their position is. Waiting till tonight to ask questions is, uh, is a mistake. If you wanted to know something before tonight, you should've asked somebody. The other thing is, you say you're good with this, if we voted out, quite frankly, I'm not. You know, I've been on, I've been involved in negotiations with the, uh, Wilson County Teachers Association for years. And we, we went through this, and we, we had to fix some horrible mistakes that occurred. And there were some people that it really aggravated because they didn't get as much money as they thought they should. But our pay plan for our teachers is better now than it ever has been before, um, even though it's not enough. But it's better than the steps, and the structure of it is better than it's ever been. There were some growing pains that went through it. There were some people that didn't like the change. But people, we don't need to let the tail wag the dog. This group of people right here are the ones that set the policy, and should move forward with something that is positive and not negative. And I'll push there. Thank you.
I, I was just curious as to sending it back to budget, what, what's going to be, what's gonna come out of budget? What are we specifically looking for? Is it specifically numbers that are incorrect or not correct? Or is it the process, or is it the particular of the steps, or what? I, I was just kinda curious, just, anybody?
If I can answer from my perspective, or another?
There's an answer. My goal would be that you were gonna give me the ability to not to go and talk to the Barbara Webb's and the Linda Neal's and everybody else about the individual grade and the individual salary, and see if I could get them to plug it in and be in on board. That was, that was the goal that I, that I had in my mind. But I didn't wanna go until you gave me the direction, say, we're okay, we can fund this thing. You've given us a, a pretty good estimate of what it's gonna cost. Now, somebody, Commissioner McFarland, you may speak to that if you'd like, you're next.
That's what it costs. I, I won't, I won't say that a number of people here, uh, Ms. Webb, Mr. Spickert, several I've talked to today, have seen it as an educational thing, they need to be wrong. Concept, I think, is great, all the people I've talked to, that concept is great. Just a matter of going back into the committee and bringing out the numbers a little bit, ask the questions. And I think that, uh, all the fee offices and department heads, they'd all come together in a briefing like you're going through right now, as everybody's able to understand it a bit better, and get all a little hold and plugged up before we come back to Oklahoma for the, the final round.
I met with every fee office and road commission, everybody in general government, I really didn't because I wanted to get your opinion first. They have not seen numbers. Uh, if Ms. Webb took her numbers home tonight and looked at them, she, she may be happily surprised. Commissioner Murray?
We used to have a finance director named Ron Gilchrist, and Ron always told us, whatever you do, you can undo. We should've passed this tonight, and then we could've ironed out all these situations. It's not something you put in concrete, you work it out from there. Give, give the mayor and that staff a chance to speak with these individuals. I think we're sending a message to our county employees that maybe we don't even care. You know, at least we, we're starting a process, and that tells our county employees, well, maybe they do have our interest at heart. That's all.
Yes, I think the motion committee, along with the finance director and the HR director, uh, look at the problems we're dealing with and come back in either May or June, uh, with a resolution for the rest of it.
Second.
To comply with the rules, you've already made a, uh, you've already made a decision, sent it to the budget committee. Somebody that voted for the prevailing side, which was in effect everybody, will have to make a motion and second or reconsider it.
Make a motion, reconsider, that's what we have to have.
Before you go any further, to make sure that we're all on the same page. If it passes to reconsider, then you come back and you make a motion on either the resolution or a portion of the resolution, or no part of the resolution, whatever you want. But it's, it's got to go through a reconsideration process first, because you've already voted, to send it to the committee.
As the mayor, I'm completely fine with doing what you guys have set out, and that is going back to each individual department, getting by and hopefully letters of support, uh, and coming back to you and that. Uh, budget committee, Justice, I think you talked to me earlier about that. I'm, I'm good with that, so we don't muddy the waters. If you wanna do something different, again, you're in charge. So, Mike, where are we with, with where we're at right now?
Well, right now, if nothing else happens, it goes back to the budget committee for consideration, and comes back here in some form, or not.
I've got five people to help with.
Let me come back to you, Commissioner Ash, if I can. Uh, let's secure these five people out, I think it, I think it's deserved. Commissioner Bradshaw?
Well, somebody must've talked too fast, I missed something, I didn't know it was going back to the budget committee. I missed that part, I disagree with that. You booked that down from above.
Well, I'm gonna wait till, see what next is that right here, but I won't have a motion. I pushed the button for Commissioner Ash and put his motion on the floor, but I thought, I've only got this package right, where the detail broke down, how it's gonna be set up. Unfortunately, I, now, I've meditated twice, but this packet, I only got it right. I asked some people, they said that they had not. I was gone all week in there, in downtown, unfortunately, on a personal matter, and, of course, that worked out. I, I had questions, I thought this, that we were passing, but that's what the attempt was, is to pass this particular pay plan. My position was, I'm not gonna vote on anything until I know what it is. Uh, and there's, if there's some people that's not satisfied, or got questions, department heads, or whoever, I'd like to get those worked out, then we'll pass it. I'm not against a pay plan, I'm just saying, let's work out the details before we just start passing them.
I'm not against the county employees. Uh, and my reason for, for this is, um, there had been a whole lot of conversation, anyway, on this pay plan until today, and I've been inundated with what we should do. Um, I made a choice standing there at the podium, just like I did when I got elected, the first time, it's not to make 24 new friends, it's to do what I think's right. So, I say we send it back. Reason I'm saying send it back is we work on it again, if we wanna have work sessions, if you guys wanna have work sessions, that's fine with me. I believe, I believe we gotta set a plan, I believe everybody's put a lot of hard work into this, um, and I'm not, I didn't send it back. Um, and I'm not, I didn't send it back to kill it, I promise you that. Um, I sent it back so we're all working together, I don't think we should die.
Commissioner Madden?
Uh, yes, I am, I am wholeheartedly for the pay plan, but it was my understanding that we were gonna be voting on the concept of it, and it would be going before, we would be talking to everyone about it. Uh, I really think it's better if we, if we do that. Uh, I do not wanna sit killed, I don't wanna sit killed. I really support the pay plan. But, uh, it, maybe it's just amended putting in the, uh, to adopt, uh, consider, to, to consider adopting, or however, I, I'm for it. But I'm just, it's not the way that I thought it would be from budget. It didn't, the resolution doesn't, didn't come out the way that the discussion in budget.
Commissioner Bush?
Yes, uh, thank you. I totally concur with, uh, Mr. Justice's statement. I don't, I don't, for me at least, it was, uh, a vote to send it back to budget was not in any sense a vote to kill it. I think the work that has been done by you and in your staff has been monumental. Um, and I think what you've done is put in front of us, uh, a lot of numbers that do need some additional thought. Uh, for instance, for me, uh, I'm very concerned about our ability to afford this just in the next year. Uh, it's based on assumptions about growth money, uh, and it eats up next year, uh, three quarters of the proposed growth money that we're forecasting. And we all know how difficult forecasts are, I appreciate that. Uh, but I think it's very appropriate, now that this work has been done, for the budget committee and other interested people, to consider the, the overall numbers and to think through it. I mean, I would like very much to analyze this in concert with next year's budget process. I mean, that's, that's where we oughta start with this thing. Uh, so that's, that's just one person's opinion. It, it's the right thing to do. Uh, it is very expensive, uh, it's long overdue, uh, but we also have tremendous needs, uh, other than this, uh, in this county. Uh, we raised property taxes significantly on our constituents last year for the purpose of improving the fund balance, to make our financial structure more sound. Uh, this doesn't necessarily do that, that concerns me. We need to weigh those two competing needs, it seems to me. Uh, so I think we need some more thought and some more work on it, and I believe sending it to the budget committee, uh, is, is the proper thing to do.
Commissioner Ash?
Mike, yeah, I'm like the resolution, not to make a motion, separate from the resolution without bringing the resolution back.
I don't think so, because all our resolutions are supposed to be in right and intact. So you've gotta, I think you've gotta work from the resolution and you send that. And I'm not gonna bring the resolution back.
Have two more before I get to you? And then I'll, I'm...
You get a second.
I don't, I don't, and then here, forgot a second, and then here.
I got a motion in a second.
Make sure we're all on the same page. As we sit here right now, this resolution is going back to the budget committee. If you make a motion and second to reconsider the motion, it doesn't, I mean, the resolution, it doesn't approve the resolution. It'll take thirteen votes to bring it back up for you then to vote on the resolution as to what you wanna do with it. Reconsideration only means bring it back to the floor, it doesn't mean it's approved. It'll take a series of votes to get where some of you wanna go, and it'll take only one vote, like, firmly stands or something similar, to keep that from act. Okay? That's the reason for the motion to reconsider, it's not meant to be there either, it's meant to be a, a word in white.
Still have your motion? Go ahead, second. You do a roll call here? Can you speak? Come on, go.
I leave the H K, because to have it brought back up, we did a, we did a voice vote, and nobody opposed.
I didn't understand what you said there.
We, we're gonna skip past that for a minute. We, we did a voice vote. Is that right? And nobody at the time opposed.
That's right.
How do, how do we bring it back up?
Motion to reconsider, that to be made by somebody who voted on this, so they didn't ask. We were all on the debate side. Except for Commissioner Bradshaw, who didn't oppose.
Any other questions?
In order, he, as the committee chair, referred it back to the committee, and we still vote it revotify here, vote for reconsider?
Don't vote for reconsider.
After the chairman sent it back to his, his, his...
Chairman, chairman, chairman of the board? Get ready, lady. Any other discussion on this?
It does like two thirds.
To reconsider?
No.
Thirteen?
Any other? Are we going to, or how, please, you? This is bringing it back up, the biggest gap. Is that the fruits? And the fruit is to bring it back up, the biggest gap. Please, Captain, go.
Motion to reconsider, all of them. Bring it back to the floor. Commissioner Patton?
That's what I'm gonna do.
Please record the vote. Comes back to the floor. Commissioner Justice, if you can come back to the top and handle this, please.
Resolution thirteen dash four S five, resolution of board of county commissioners, Wilson County, Tennessee, to adopt the Wilson County Pay Plan for all general government, including the fee office, agricultural center, and roads and sidewalk based employees. My motion will be to send it back to the budget committee for further study and be brought back to the commission in June.
So here's your question. Any discussion?
Roll call, roll.
Discussion first, start with the commissioner.
When I come on this commission six years ago, I then asked for a graduated pay scale, such as civil service, which I worked under, Commissioner McFarland worked under, and, um, something like that, because I thought it was a fair plan. And when you came on, I think one of the first things Mayor Hutto, you and I discussed was, I told you I want a pay scale, like I said, pay scale for our employees. Uh, I'm glad we got one. The reason I wanna send it back to budget is, I think there's too many discrepancies. And you and I talked more this weekend, Saturday and Sunday, and I talked to my wife, probably. But anyway, I think there's too many discrepancies in the plan. For instance, and I'm not gonna tell, say which one it is, but there's one in there in the same department, that one is a five, one is a six, and they have the exact same training. They have the exact same training, and really, and it's comparable to another in another department. But it's just, uh, and like I told you, the people, the correction officers, uh, they're twenty-seven now, which, which I really think they're underpaid now, and then it goes back to twenty-four. And I understand this with the other counties got, but I don't really care what the other counties got. This is Wilson County, and I wanna do what's right with Wilson County. I, I'd like to send it back to budget, to send it back and let some people look at it, and let's revisit where some of these things should be right. And when it comes back, and hopefully, in, uh, May commission, I'll vote for it. All I wanna do is just let's get it fixed. I've never voted on, on anything in my life where I voted on something and then fixed it. I wanna fix it first and then vote on it. I don't think it's right to say, okay, I'm gonna pass this thing because I like the concept, but it's not right, but I'm, I'm trusting you to fix it between now and then.
Officer, they go to twenty-nine, as opposed to paying twenty-seven now.
There's still three rounds left.
But it's a graduating scale, so they're gonna get two more than what they normally get right now. So, but that's just, that's just, but they're gonna get twenty-nine in the end, as opposed to twenty-seven.
Twenty years, get there.
Uh, it does unless they're already halfway there.
Twenty years, get there.
And then the other one would be the job description and the grade. We're set on our first initial talk with those folks, and that would be what our second talk would be about, are these people in the right spot? We talked with Commissioner, I mean, with the Chair Brian today, is, uh, school resource officer need to be in the same place to keep deputy, because we need to move those. That would be left to the department head. Commissioner Justice, if you have a question, I'm sorry.
I, I think it's important to realize that the budget committee sent it up here, and, and there was a lot of, a lot of conversation in that meeting that's not in the minutes, and there was, there were some questions brought that night. So I think it's important to realize that, I think the budget committee is for this, a graduated pay scale, um, but a lot of this has come out today. I mean, I've had a lot of calls today with, with starting, starting salaries, uh, how competitive are we gonna be at starting salaries? There are a lot of things that can be worked out. And one thing I would request is, the department heads, if they had a question, that's why I said the June meeting, if you have a question, comment, or concern about where your people are, you need to make one of those meetings. And if you don't, we set policy. So when it comes back, you vote it up or down. But I feel like you would get something, in the June meeting, I think you'll get something from the budget committee, whether you vote yes or no at that time, I think you'll get something from the committee.
Commissioner Ash?
I think there are two distinct parts to this resolution. Uh, I think the first part, most of us can agree, which is the step increases. Uh, I'd like to have, I'd like to separate that, vote on that tonight. I have some problems with pay raises myself, but I, I feel I think it'll be worked out. And, uh, I think we separate them, vote on the, on pay, uh, step increases tonight, pass that, it tells our employees that, yes, we are, could, could, uh, absolutely could vote it to this plan. You know, Mike, if I can do that, you might have that.
Is that a motion?
I, I wanna make a motion that we vote on the pay from the step increases tonight.
The concept?
The concept. The, the pay, the step increases, that we commit to that tonight.
We like the concept, that's why.
Yeah. Yeah, I hope.
Commissioner Stafford?
Yes, sir, I'd like to say... First off, I'd love to see us get this worked out, because, uh, we all on the same page as far as making sure that we get the, uh, employees a pay raise. But I wanna go back to something that Commissioner Bush said, he's talking about pay increases and how this is gonna cost us, but I thought we already had the money kinda worked out of where it was coming from and the money that we were getting back, uh, is, is how we're gonna use to make the pay raises. Is that my understanding, or did I get that wrong somewhere? But I just wanted to make sure that it's known, it's not coming out of no tax increases and no extra money, no new money, no growth money. We've already got, kinda figured out where the money's coming from, is that not correct?
It's coming out of growth money. Two percent, if we have a two percent or better, you would still have a hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars left over for needs assessment, once the pay plan's taken out.
And this is money that, this is money that was owed back to us from another source, correct?
Part of the years, part of the growth money.
Okay, I just wanna make sure of that, but I just wanna, um, I'd just like to see us get this worked out, because I believe each and every last one of us on the same level of making sure that all the employees have a pay raise. We know that they are all very, very deserving, and I'd like to see us get this worked out, and I can go along, I can't even believe I'm gonna say this, but I can go along again with what Bernie said about, uh, voting for the concept.
I just don't understand the, I guess, the rush. I represent the county employees, I'm for them getting a step raise, but I also represent everybody in the county, everybody in my district, and I don't understand what the rush is. We need to make sure it's right. We're responsible for every taxpayer in our county, and I don't understand going back to budget and meeting with the department heads and making sure the numbers are correct and making sure we can afford it. I don't know why that's a bad thing. I still believe we need to take it back to budget, we can work through all the issues, and I, for one, don't wanna sit there, I wanna give the employees a raise, but I don't wanna be someone that goes out there and says I'm for it, then all of a sudden we can't afford it, and it makes it look like we're not prepared and we don't know what we're doing.
Commissioner Jones?
If, uh, if county employees have got a pay raise, every time we had good intentions, they'd be making a lot of money. Because every time it comes to what Pa says is cutting time, uh, we always cut it around. And, uh, I believe Mike Justice and, and the others, when they say they wanna send it back to committee, not to kill it, but to fix it. Uh, you know, to address some of the concerns is, there's a mechanism in there, if we don't give a two percent growth, then it goes to the next year. Uh, over the last six or seven years I've been here, uh, we've had growth money, we've had an opportunity to give the employees a raise, but, uh, you know, we bought, uh, stuff that we needed and, uh, maybe some stuff that we did need, uh, and, uh, we hadn't done with employees what we should have done. We got an opportunity tonight to do it, but we wanna put it off. I'm all right with putting it off, but I'm gonna try to amend your motion to send it back to committee. I think, uh, this been out here a long time, and, uh, you know, I don't know why all the questions are up here tonight. You know, if I was a department head and I knew they were gonna try to take my pay plan on my employees, I'd be the first one in your door by your final vote going up until the last. But, uh, having said that, I'd like to amend your motion to send it back.
One more, one more. We still discussing first issue.
I, I am too.
You're right, you came back to motion, but I just talked on this, on the, on this table right here. I've had my butt over thirty minutes.
There ain't no amendment on the floor, Freddie. There ain't no, ain't no motion before we brought it back to reconsider. Hell, out here, Mike, you fix it for us.
We just made it, send it back.
There's a motion for us to send it back to the budget committee.
We can't bring a note up till I talk...
I ain't bringing, I'm not bringing up a motion, I'm trying to amend it.
You're trying to amend?
All right, well, you wanna let Freddie talk then, I'll amend.
I spent quite a rough time reading this, studying it, talking to you, Mayor. The only thing I, one of the, one of the things, main thing I say, and I ask you, point blank, did the fee officers agree with this? And you told me that Mr., that Mr. Ben Jennings was working on it. That's what you told me, that he was working on that issue. And I don't see anything that work he has done there. You told me that, that, I asked you those questions point blank, did, they, they go along with it? And you said Mr. Jennings was working on it.
Mr. West and I came and said it should get you paid twice. We talked. And what I told you is that when I talked to Ms. Linda Neal, and Mr. Barbara Webb, and the rest of these folks, on the concept, on the beginning, they said, they didn't mind it, they liked it. We hadn't talked about any detailed numbers, but now, Mr. Jennings has not had anything to do with this at all. I made...
I'm not talking about numbers.
Yeah.
I'm talking about, I'm talking about weather. Understand it. You told me there'll be weather, understand it.
You're talking about the special school agreement, the first time I explained it to them, but I knew I had to go back and get a complete buy-in at the end, once they read the numbers. They have the authority to do what they wanna do. They can buy in, they don't have to buy in. And again, that doesn't change anything you wanna do for general government employees. If they want to not be a part of it, they don't have to be a part of it. It, it is their call on that. Our hopes were, we're all gonna be on the same page. That's, that was our goal. But I beg to differ with you on Mr. Jennings, I don't know what I would have asked Mr. Jennings to do. Uh, it, it's their call, not Mr. Jennings's call.
I can vote for it. We don't have a lot of understanding from every department, that the goes on, what go along with this, because it's not fair for us to give one percent here and somebody else to give four percent. 4%. I can't go along with it until it's all on the same page.
Commissioner McFarlane?
We haven't had a graduated pay scale in this county since the beginning of time. I don't understand why 30 days, some work sessions, some hearings concluded in a work session, more evaluations to try to find the problems that several have seen in this. It's not good, it's not bad, and I don't think we need to rush into the, I think, get reevaluated, that anybody wants to come to these work sessions and hearings, come and play everything, but I think we need to look at the numbers. We just got to, I for one, I'm not trying to get back the budget together, I'm trying to support this plan. I want it right when we can put it out.
Mr. Bush?
I wanted to respond to what Commissioner Stafford asked earlier, because the devil really is in the details here. And, and I just need to repeat my own concern that the plan as presented, even over a 10-year payout period, eats up three-quarters of the closed growth money, in addition to being funded by the refund from the Lebanon Special School District. So it's two pieces. The refund is 76,000 bucks in the first year for the general fund. The, the 2% growth for next year is projected to be $400,000. The increase, as proposed here, is for 300,000 of that 400,000 to go to this plan. Now, if that's what we want to do, that's fine, but we need to understand what we're doing to ourselves here. And I don't think any of us has really had a chance to take a 30,000-foot view of the size of these numbers. And, and I think it's very, very important that we do.
And that's the reason why I was trying to get a level of understanding.
Fair enough, yeah.
Last one. Mr. Jones?
I'd like to amend your motion. Yeah, you're, you're, I would like to, and if you accept it, that'd be good. I'd like to amend it to where it goes back to the Budget Committee, just like you said. Have the department heads come in, have your work sessions, do whatever you got to do to get it fixed. But my amendment to it was to bring it back here next month for a over-down vote. That's what my amendment is.
You accept Mr. Jennings's suggestion?
I wish you would say June, because it allows us to have, there, there's no way an apartment head or an employee or somebody, anybody in, in that length of time that has a problem can't, can't make it to one of those meetings. And, and I will tell you this, I'll make a motion out of the Budget Committee to bring this back and put it in front of it in some form. Whether I get a second or not, I don't know. What I like is that it's fixed.
The thing about it is, you know, according to everybody, nobody has a problem with the step part, and nobody has a problem with, the only problem is they have, is somebody's making a little more than their person's making, is what I've heard today, or where somebody starts out at. And so, I mean, I have never been involved in any kind of negotiations where you worry about somebody you don't have instead of somebody you do have, but I believe that's where we're at right now. So the, the, the problem that we have is, is very small. So I don't know why it would take 60 days to fix it. So that's why my motion was for 30 days, because if the department head has a problem with line number 42 and line number 43, that shouldn't take long to fix. And if the department head or if somebody else has a problem with, with where their base salary starts, just pump it up. It's, it's not hard to fix it. So that's why I'm saying, you know, if, if we really want to get this done, because of, of the reason why I start now is because we got budget time coming up, and so, you know, we, we drag it on out in two or three months, then you're at budget time, then you're going to have to make up two budgets. So, so if, if, if the department head wants to fix it, or some of the employees have concerns and they want to fix it, or if some of the commissioners have concerns and they want to fix it, I mean, I've known about this plan for two months. Now, there's certain parts of it that, that I didn't, didn't find out till, like, like the rest of you did a few days ago, but it's like a big banana split. It really is. I love banana splits, but now if they ain't got a cherry on it, it doesn't mean I ain't going to eat. So what I'm telling you is, I think we can get it done in 30 days. And that's what my motion is, and I appreciate it, too.
I'll accept if you do sit down and roll.
Second? I'll be there, but.
And I will say, I think it's literally.
Sometimes to, to say that we all like it, the concept, or we don't really know what it all is. So I don't really like nothing, I don't know what it all is, and today has been a mess. I don't know. But yeah, I'll accept.
If I can add to this, the issues that I see.
1%, nobody's fussing about it. The people of what they're making today, nobody's fussing about, because we're not taking any money, wait for me about it. I've talked to Mr. Lynch before indirectly, the start-out salary, this concern he has, maybe concerns some other people. I would love the opportunity to go sit down with each one of these people, every department, and have, and let them look at it, have any thoughts or whatever in mind, and then when we have the Budget Committee meeting, they could come and address you then on their concerns. And if they don't have any concerns at that time, if it's suitable for them, then you could send it back over here in May or not. Mr. Manter will say that he needs the numbers as soon as possible for us to start budgeting. That would be why I would be, I would love her to do it in May instead of June. But I, we can do the legwork, go meet with every department head, they'll know that they need to appear at the Budget Committee, especially if they don't like it, and voice their concerns to you, and if they, if they don't want it then, we don't do it. You'll give me that permission to go talk to each one of them, and she'll, we've already run each department sheet off, so we're ready to go talk to them as soon as she gets them out of practice. But you'll let me do that in, in, in between times?
Yeah, I mean, we can send that out, or I can, when I go see each one, I'm going to get everybody together and do, I mean, you let me know when the meeting is, and we'll set, we'll be ready for you when you have your budget meeting.
Your county commissioners meeting in May is, I think, the director.
Mike, do you want to meet on a regular day, or do you want to meet on a week early?
Let's do a week early. We're not having a regular day. So we just ordered.
Just ordered.
More than one day. Let him, let's do the regular, we'll have one meeting if anyone show up late, and that's the one.
Meet on the second, that way you'll be ready for the budget meeting on May night. This is the voice though?
You got a motion to amend on the forward.
You accept it.
You accept it. So your motion is to send it back to the Budget Committee, where the Budget Committee will report back to the county commissioners.
All in favor, say aye. And no?
No.
You got one? Put it past it. You go back to the Budget Committee. Well, any of you business? Any of you business? Your votes go during, I have a second. All in favor, say aye.